All right. Hello, everyone, and good evening. Welcome to our Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Board of Education meeting. My name is Tim Hopkins. I will preside with the meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order at six o'clock P M. Next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda as presented.
We're starting to approve the agenda as we know.
Second, all right, you have motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And that motion can. Next item on our agenda, we pledge allegiance and honor the silent.
I pledge allegiance because it's to the flag, I mean, not to cities of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And keep remaining standing for more than silence. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from our October twentieth, twenty twenty-five board meeting. I need a motion.
There said that one's approved in most, uh, previous manual, ten, twenty, twenty-five.
All right, we have motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Any objections, everybody? And that motion, the next item on our agenda is public participation. And we do not have any slips tonight. Next item would be reports and presentations. And under that, we do have a warrant. And I'll start with you after doing that.
So thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We are naming our friend of Seaford. Awarded news for the evening. Our friend of Seaford is meant to recognize individuals who provide real benefit to the district and not just in a singular act or occasion, but over time and with trueman. And so for a couple of years now, we've selected two, two folks to be recognized. Because you won't find it difficult to believe, but we have lots of folks that help that contribute their time and service and resources. And we always have a hard time picking just one. So I'm going to start, I think, with Marshall Lindley, who was nominated by Mrs. Jean Brace, who is our district visiting teacher. And she specifically says, Marshall Windley, who has supported all students with gifts, financial support and items for the district pantry every month for the past twenty years. So.
Somebody come on up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, my boy, you're Westy.
I have. This is for you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
I'll leave there because we gotta go up again.
So our second friend, there's actually two friends, is Julius and Natasha Mullin. And you were actually nominated by Mr. Gary Zoll. And he's not typically a man of few words. But I think he did his nomination and just knowing that we would know all of the things that he had done. So I'm going to now force Mr. Zoll to go for the last time. Kind of how Mr. Zoll.
Well, listen, I, I started working with these two a long time ago, and I was a middle school teacher and a lot younger than I am today. And for the past twenty, twenty-five years, they've worked with our students in lots of different capacities. The one that I really kind of nominated them for is the Man Up and the Unique Group that they do with our boys and girls of our, of our district. And throughout the years, they've done things on Saturdays, things in the evenings, work on the basketball court. And they have just helped so many of our students. I think one that's on the board right now was, was a member of some of the. And I think one of the board members also was a part of helping the Man Up and the.
Two of us.
So just the lives that they've touched and the kids that they've, they've helped in our district have been huge. And so that's why I nominated you guys.
Make some noise.
You can be fair. Be fair. Dr. Benson wanted us to give you that small trophy right there.
He's gonna say you're more twenty.
Sure, your basketball game is not what it used to be. You guys, I've known.
Geez.
Ninety-six, ninety-seven. I don't know.
So y'all two are in the middle of the S.
Okay. We all agree that you deserve this so much more than that little trophy.
Y'all sixteen. Then I'll move out of her way. Thank you. This starts everybody's career. Yes. Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hold on, before we move on, I must. I'm very proud of my. I have you know that I won Bus Driver Bingo. That's what my award is. No, I wanted to make sure it was displayed so everyone could see.
Put that green sticker on the machine.
Yes. No, but it's always a special time of year. And thank you to Mrs. Mas for reminding me that we needed to get on this because the plaques and all of the logistics is completely to her.
Y'all got that. Good to go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Have a good one.
Your first, Tasha.
Have a good night. We'll be right back soon.
Oh, my goodness.
Sure, I mean, we'll go right into.
Next, we have superintendent communication with Dr. Gooey.
Yep. So first of all, I guess happy almost Thanksgiving. Now everybody is looking forward to that. There's a little time with family and good food and everything that comes with that. Two weeks ago, we had a visit by the Secretary of Ed and the Governor at Fred Douglas. And we were able to walk them to three classrooms, I think, and also show how we use data to inform instruction. Oh, parentheses, that they had requested a date, a time and a location. So hopefully, moving forward, we'll be able to show them some other schools here in Seaford. Because certainly all of our schools are rich celebrating. Finally, I don't know, Dr. Benson, apparently our.
Or you don't know.
Man, then going to the chip. We got one more game.
Go Saturday night, seven o'clock here against McKean. And. Forty-eight minutes.
Just said, I'm gonna tell you what, though, we was live on Friday.
Yeah.
We was live on Friday night.
It's been warmer this week. What's the weather?
It's nice.
So that's exciting. But other than that, we're just doing all the things in school and everything's ticking away really horrible.
Yep.
That's good stuff. That's good stuff. All right, next of board negotiations. Does anyone on the board have anything? Tom, that one share.
The word of the P E F C marches forward. We have began our public engagement sessions. The first one was today. It was virtual. Our next one is actually tomorrow at five thirty. It's also virtual. But then right now, we have three that are scheduled in person on the nineteenth at Howard High School at five thirty, December third at Cape and Lippin at five thirty, and December fourth at Polytech High School at five thirty. And we're also looking to schedule a couple more because, you know, just getting like, you know, the east side of the county doesn't really work for us. You know, we need to have one on the west side as well. And then also one more in Newcastle outside of the city. So. So be on the lookout for those. If you have, if you want to learn more, feel free to show up. Again, tomorrow's is virtual at five thirty. I think I'm, I think I'm leaving that one actually. So. Look forward to seeing folks there and hearing their questions.
Make sure it's all on Seaford at the, at even our assets.
Thanks. It was already on here.
Do it again.
I'd like to say something, two things. One, Happy Veterans Day to all veterans within the district. It was last week, me and Mr. Rice, we were celebrating together as we often do. And then also me and Dr. V, who participated in the webinar series last Wednesday with First State.
First State, First State Education.
First State Education. They didn't handle business. So we were practicing for our big stage.
About how boards can work together with superintendents, just what is a successful board or superintendent dynamic look like? And yeah, it definitely gave us information because we were accepted to present at the board conference in the spring. And yeah, we'll have to do a little lessons learned from that panel to move forward.
Actually, I saw a lot of information for that too, because I think we probably had some deadlines passed with some information that didn't hear from us.
Did you guys get emails done separately? Okay.
We did, but I didn't know that we were.
I didn't know. I didn't know. We're doing it separately.
I just did the submission. I think the separate emails that you get is to be able to do like your biography or other things like that. But.
Yeah.
Get in there.
I really thought it was a fish.
I thought it was, I didn't, all right.
Fair enough.
All right.
I, I wanted to say, this red tie is not Laurel. It's the only football I could find in a football team. Patrick back there, I see him coming out red on heat, I'm excited. Also, the coach, before the season started, the coach and the two or three football players were out there. N F W helped a little spaghetti dinner, and he had one new ball caps. And he said, here you go, you had a ball cap. It's gonna be a championship. Anyway, this is the ball cap we gave him. We haven't had the same head. So. I'm carrying Sharpie around when I get him by himself and get him something. Awesome.
All right. So next item I see that Mr. Gold, Bernie, ready to go. And we're gonna talk about K E R, publicly served and complaint regulation.
Yeah, and this goes to, I mean, there's a few that are similar to this. So we just wanted to kind of rewrite this and make it a little shorter and simpler. The old regulation was three pages long every week. And went through a whole list of things. We tried to shorten it down and make it more one user friendly. We'll also look at some of the timeline, but for instance, that three complaint or does come to the board. I bet it goes in twenty days so that we know that almost every time there's a board meeting that happens, it's been twenty days or another point for that. Like, for a bit, it was twenty-five days, which is. Just like I said, short, short, shorter, sweeter, kind of laid out exactly what the steps are. Would you have to do it separately?
And the next one also. Thank you, Gary. So we have K E A A R, regulation.
Written exactly the, the same way. Basically, you, you just took public out and put parents in there. They have a link similar nature, just the, the process the same way. Of if they have a true complaint about a board policy not being followed, that, that, you know, they think from the twenty working days for the board just to hear the benefit.
Then the next one we have is personnel goal policy. And that's Mr. Cameron.
There's no changes to this, this policy. It's just a review. So as we work through the continuing updating of this policy manual, there will be a heavy focus during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year in the personnel side of things because it is tied to my rules with Dr. DeGraulma. So we're gonna start knocking it off as we can. We will continue our focus on the rest of the manual, but since personnel is what falls under me, we'll, we'll be getting this done. But that's, that's why G A is on there. We looked at this one not too long ago, but just wanted to, I need to get into certain timeframe and the, we're gonna continue with it.
Next item is G B D, communications with staff policy. And that is Mr. Cameron.
So similar here, there are no changes. This is just a review of, of the policy. Once again, just kind of, of looking at it, and then we'll be looking at some regs with that as well.
Fair enough. Next one also, Mr. Cameron, it is the H F School Board Negotiating Agents Policy.
Look for. The H F right now. So once again, no, no change to this policy. So there's, I think there's four policies underneath the negotiation section, the section eight of our policy manual. And we are in a negotiation year. So what better time to take a look at it before we get into negotiations, which we'll probably start about the end of January, beginning of February. We have all three contracts to negotiate this year on, between the, the board and the, the teachers, the parents and the custodians. So no changes to H F.
Right. The next one is H K, release and negotiation information policy. And that's Mr. Cameron.
Yes, second verse, same as the first. No changes, just a review of, of that policy. And like I said, we're heading into a negotiation here.
Then we have K E, which is called what concerns a complaint policy.
Yeah. So there are, are no changes to this policy either. It's just a review, and we'll talk about some regs with that a little bit later on, on the list. But once again, just a review of this policy as we continue our process in conjunction with Mr. Zoll was saying in regards to his reviews. We kind of tie this all together to make sense.
Yeah, the regulations that I've got on the floor, I go with this policy.
But then after that one, we have.
And the parent plays similar.
Which one? Sorry, two again.
That's the one it goes with.
Oh, got you, got you, got you. All right. So then we have G C C R, professional staff lead to absence and regulation. Uh, if we miss B E O, I skipped one.
Oh, that's good. That one, yeah, I didn't check for mine.
All right, G P R, school board meeting regulation.
Yes. So in here, one of the things we addressed a little bit was two things that kind of needed updating regulation going along with what we do. One part of it was the setting of the agenda and us kind of updating what we do versus what was in, in the regulation. So we wanted to make sure that was, that was captured. And I, when I say we, this is, I always want to remind everybody, despite your first time listening to a board meeting with Dr. Savage and Mr. Wright, it's in a policy committee that meets prior to this to get the board's input on the policies and regulations. And the other piece was the public participation, to get it up to speed with what we do with public participation. It was a a little outdated, Dr. Savage, I guess, to say the least. So this gets us in line of our actual practices of what we do at board meetings in regards to how, how they're managed.
Then we have G C C R, professional staff who have some regulations.
Yes, stop me if you've heard me say this before. This is the ever famous lead policy or regulation that I brought to this entity. I think if I go on here. G C C R, right? If we get to the very bottom of this ten-page policy or regulation, you can see we brought it to you in December of last year, October this year, and, and bring it here. We also brought, brought it before November, a year before. Every time I think we have done what they've asked us to do with this, they find something else. And this needs to be in place prior to January one. I've expressed my discontent with how, how I have to keep doing this and, and bringing it back. But I've got to get this where it needs to be in order to be grandfather under paid criminal short-term disability for the state with the new Delaware Paid Family League coming in as of January one. Literally, the only change is on page six, we had to remove the, the word consecutive when it came to twelve weeks because it doesn't have to be consecutive any longer under Delaware Paid Family League. So that's the same thing that, that was happening in G C C R and in, in G D C R as well. Those ones professional, ones support staff. It's removing consecutive out of both those, those regulations.
Did they say we got it right this time?
Well, I've heard that before, so I won't hold my breath.
And didn't another update come last night? Didn't we get something late last?
Yeah, but we're, we're, we're covered in all right, what we've already done. And in one of my other capacities, I, I served as the president of DAS Club for the Personnel Directors. This has been a challenge for all of us. And I don't know how many times I've shared our policy and regulations with other districts who are trying to adopt it the same way. Because when we're, when we've gotten approved and everything, and so at least this one's a little bit quicker to turn around with us. And so it's a regulation, so we're bringing it to you. Tomorrow, I will send it off to the Department of Labor and cross the fingers on both my hands.
We'll cross our fingers with you.
Thank you.
And if you, you know, as, as it rolls out, let people suppose it occurs, like, we should put, I'm just thinking, like, when it's consecutive and you get like a long-term sub, then they kind of like, no, okay, for this amount of time, you will be filling in for this person. But like you were just saying, it doesn't have to be consecutive.
No, because it's not. So it's.
It's just a fact.
It's the lead thing.
Right. This is what you're able to, to earn if, or is when you qualify for paid friendly. If or is when you qualify for paid friendly, when you qualify for short term disability, when you qualify for FMLA, when you call and then. When you qualify for Delaware paid family leave. So this is more about our employees and when they do qualify for and when they can use it.
Got you.
Yes, yep.
Question.
Yeah.
So we've been doing this probably what last three years, four years? Are you guys closing in on um? Reviewing those other policies?
Thank you, man. Thank you, man.
No, no, I'm talking about.
Double blow.
Um.
We try to save Jeff.
I would like.
You did a count three years ago, how many individual pieces of policies? They were in the six hundreds.
Wow, so we're.
So no, not because you do like five at a meeting.
Right.
By the time you get to the end, you have to start over again.
Kind of like painting the Golden Gate Bridge, right? They start, they start again.
I wasn't complaining, I was just wondering.
I we made a dent and I mean, a big part of the lift was getting us onto the N E P N. That we we did before, which we're gonna talk about something like that later today. Uh, but it's been, it it's been a uh. It's just, I think it's been a very positive experience. I think we've really cleaned stuff up and. We kind of had an order started and then other stuff, as other stuff's come up, it's kind of jumped the line on things, but.
I think we've also built up our own familiarity with what's in policy or where to find things. Like obviously I have the whole thing memorized. But we've reviewed enough of these that when something comes up, we can say, I think it's mentioned in a policy, let's go find it.
And it's good practice. Good personal pr- uh professional practice to review this stuff. All known, because you just. Things change every five minutes, it's gonna say.
Every month.
Fun every month for this one.
Yeah, that's true. And some of these, Mr. Rice, I don't know if if you are aware, but some of these haven't been reviewed since the seventies. So it's wavy out of time.
I know, I don't know so now. Change.
Oh, I know. Alright, so then um. Mr. Cameron already said that the next thing that's on the G B C R support staff meeting is similar to. Yeah, so with G B D R communication with staff regulation.
Yeah, the the only change to this policy is we had to refer to the proper policy and regulation in. This policy. So as we've gone through, remember some stuff has gotten changed and so this was one that had to get updated because it was not referred to the actual. Policy regulation existed anymore. So that's the only update to this policy, make it to refer to the proper policy.
Cross reference.
Right. Okay. And then the next one, um, we have is G B K R staff concern slash complaint slash grievous in regulation.
Okay, so this is, oh, I have the pause here, but I similar to what Mr. Zoll said, this is making our. Our complaint process very similar across the board for all entities. And so. Picking back and off what he said, this took a three page policy down. Or three pages of regulation down to about one page, clear and concise and got some dates or some days all universal because. A couple of the. I think uh March, you might have pointed this out when we met, a couple of them had. You had ten days with this one or fifteen with this one, so we got everything to be exactly the the same way consistently for complaints, whether they're coming from the public, a parent. Or a teacher.
Is this the one that was in triple kit?
Yeah, uh, yes, this is the one that said they had to turn it in triple kit.
I love your commentary. Alright, alright, so the next items are our act, our agenda action items. Um, first one is school choice, you know, fortunately.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Zoll, it'd be very easy.
Not the time.
You know, I I actually.
You'll get a lot of.
So. You know, we get the the intent a little early, so I always check it around twelve. And then again, try to do it around three, see if anything changed. I was like. Nothing changed on here, that's all, making sure everything's good.
Uh, next item. It um it's field trips and what we have, we have one uh February twenty sixth of twenty six. Um, second grade students of West Se- West Seaford Elementary School, they would leave at nine thirty to five and everyone adventure aquarium and came to New Jersey. And these students will get to explore the underwater um animals through interactive experiences. And that's a pretty cool aquarium to um to visit, especially when you can walk under. Where the sharks and all the the um fish are, it's pretty awesome.
Is that in Baltimore?
I think I like, I like it. Uh, I mean, yeah.
It's different.
It is different, but I don't think Baltimore has, where you can walk underneath of the. The animals or this one that where you can like literally look up and see them and pretty pretty cool, yes.
So it's like.
The all the important. Yeah.
I I I mean, I like.
It's pretty cool. Um, the next item that we have is uh we have one for facility request.
Oh, we have, we have another trip.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so excited, but.
And we must for all.
Must for all of them. Don't.
Work to the correct.
Alright, sorry, guys. That is an action item. I need a motion to approve.
Devin's gonna make a motion to approve district or gym dance. Mark, so that's second.
Alright, your motion is second. I'm in favor, say aye. Oppose. And that motion carries. Alright, next item is facility request and you have one. And that is um the gathering of God's people. Um, the requester is Tim Bold, uh Bolden, and that is March seventh, twenty twenty six. They plan to set up around eleven twenty five in the morning and start at one P M and end around four P M and they're um asking to request our auditorium at the highest. Approximately one hundred fifty people will be there. Um, so big schools for a hundred and twelve, a hundred and fifty. Vortorin, yeah. Yep. So I need a motion to approve that.
There is a double to approve the uh so this request is presented. So I get.
Alright, there's a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. That motion carries. Um, the next item of our agenda is um something for the B E D meeting procedures by law policies. And that is just a theme right here.
So there's no content being changed. This is changing the name only. Make sure we're using the same name. Under our N E P N coding. This was one that. I think it was just a slight change that we didn't catch when we went through all that. Before, because we were more concerned about getting everything where it belonged. And we just had to to change the name of this, so that's only thing that's happening here is the change of the title. There's nothing changing to the content of the policy.
Okay, so then we just need um we just need a motion to approve this name change.
Whatever. I would reduce the proving the first reading.
The first reading.
Right, okay.
But my question then becomes, nothing inside of it has changed.
Correct, by changing the title, we are, we are, need a second reading of the policy. It's not a review because we've actually.
Because you're going A tag.
Okay, so then. I'm sorry.
Just the name.
Just the name.
Correct. What what refresh my memory? Because I know we, the the board gave you guys permission to move things around based off of that. The new procedure, so what was that?
That was when we were moving, say, something instead of being J L K should have been J L B. And that, so we were just changing that. So we did that in universal, which the board approved.
The code.
All that having changed. This is actually changing the name of the policy.
It's still B E D both times.
To be safe, we thought we needed to have two readings. That was.
That is, that is fine. It's just, you know, or.
Change the policies or change the policy.
And know that. We have given permission for things to be changed based off the fact that the rules have been changed. So then we changed the name but didn't change the information, so I'm just making sure that just like we gave permission for you to change.
If we should have changed the coding, but now we're changing the name of the policy.
Alright, so. So Jeff, you feel too, you're like. Alright, so this is an action item, so we need um a motion to approve the first reading. Of the B E D meeting procedures by law policy.
That means I make a notion to approve the first reading of B E D need procedures slash bylaws policy is presented.
There is something.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Okay, and that motion carries. Then the next one is B E D H, public participation at board meetings policies.
Yes, so this is a a new policy for us. Um, and it it kind of came about to be because when we changed, we probably think it was last board meeting, we updated the blue form, the public participation form. Uh, and it was, it's B E D H dash E. Uh, we had no B E D H to refer back to meeting exhibit without a policy. So this is the creation of the policy, kind of basically saying what we do. We'll have regulations around that that will, to be quite honest with you, mirror the blue form. But I need to get the first reading of the new policy here in December. I'll, we'll bring the regulations, go along with the second reading.
Got you. Alright, so this is two of the action item we have a motion to approve.
There is a double to approve uh B E D H public participation at board meetings policy first reading.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Okay, and that motion carries. The next item is um H A negotiations goals. Uh, such priority um objective policy.
So this is just really tidying up and making it more aligned with what we do in our policy, kind of removing like the philosophy and definition and really what we did. Was took the philosophy and definition and added it up into the body of the the policy because we're trying to get away from that structure. Uh, and that's all this does. No real content change, it's just the cosmetics of how it looks.
Alright, this is the action item we need a motion to approve.
Mark's starting to approve the first year negotiation negotiation goals slash policy objectives as presented.
Jeff, listen a second.
Alright, your motion a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. That motion carries. Alright, so the next item will be our H G superintendent's role in negotiations policy.
Okay, so this policy, a couple of things. One, we made the policy gender appropriate. Because we we need to add she in there, so it's not he slash she as opposed to just he. And uh we, it talks about select ma- select members of the management to serve on the negotiating team, which the board basically designates. The superintendent to do, to put that team together. Uh, before it said the board needed to approve that. And I I've been a part of three negotiations here and it it, that's never been done, so we were kind of not following our own policy. But for instance, if we were negotiating the parent contract, say on a Tuesday and you'd approved uh Mr. Zoll to be. Another admin on there and he had a sick kid and could be that day and I say, hey, Dr. Janetta, I need you to join me to be another admin. I couldn't do that if the board was having to approve that group because I I'd be start navigating you. So this basically takes that kind of out and we can kind of get back to you. You trust Sharon to designate who's gonna serve on that team to negotiate it. So that that's a real change in the policy.
We need one more um. Gender nu- neutral corrections. Uh, second line, he will work. We're gonna do he, she, we need to do it there too.
Okay, so we'll get that in for the second reading. So.
So I'm moved to approve then. Policy H G superintendent's role in negotiations with corrections.
Back to a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. And that motion carried. Then we have B A school board operational goal policy.
There we go. Alright, um. I'm still in my prime notes here, my first one. Um. This is, these are just second, second readings of of some policies now that we talked about at November's meeting. So uh we have received no comment in regards to any of the policies that we're looking at for second reading.
Right, so this two of the action item will be a motion for free.
That means I make a motion to approve second reading of B A school board operational goal policy is presented.
Mark, so that's second.
Alright, with a motion a second, all of those, say aye. But those. And this motion carries. The next item will be your B E school board meeting policy. And that also will need approval of the second reading.
Mark's starting to approve the second reading of B E school board meeting policies presented.
There is a second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. And that motion carries. With the next one also will be a second reading. It is your G B G A staff help policy. And this two of the action item, we need a motion.
There is a job I'm going to approve of G B G A staff help policy as presented. Second.
Alright, we have a motion a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. And that motion carries. The next one is your G D K that concerns slash complaint slash grievous policy. And this two is an action item that we need a motion to approve.
Mark's starting to approve the second reading of G B K staff concerns complaints and this policy is presented.
Second.
They have a motion of the second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. And that motion carries. The next item will be your K E A A parent complaint policy. And it's proven an action item when we start our motion.
That means I make a motion to approve the second reading of. K E A A parent complaints policies presented.
So. Alright, we have a motion. And we have a second. All in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. And that motion carries. Mr. Cameron. Next one is uh seven point one three waiver um pursuant to seventeen oh four.
So each, every year we we come to you with this, with this waiver request. Basically, what Delaware law, Delaware code says that you have to. With you have to. Um, staff are dealing with ninety percent, at least ninety percent of the number that you get from the unit count. And so I just wanted to make sure in this and in everybody listening at home and certainly six principals from maybe listening. That every building is staff over a hundred percent of what we earn in the unit count. Because we use Title One, I D E A, opportunity and other grants. And so sometimes we may earn more Division One units at one building. But because, and for instance, sometimes we get a little bit more supported in elementary level, we might take some units from the elementary. And kick over to the middle high because we don't have, there's not as many programs there to try to maximize our units to to get everybody staffed. So even though we're we're pretty close on all this. There there is a part where we're not, there are a couple of schools where not actually. Ninety percent staff in the Division One count, but every, like I said, every building is over a hundred percent. Over a hundred percent staff of what we earn by unit count. So this, by proving this waiver allows us to do what we do for staff.
So. Um, do my work on some other things, you know, there's a lot of concern across the state about these waivers and things like that. So I would specifically for other districts, but in our case, I understand that, you know, no student is losing out on what they are supposed to be getting by unit count, correct?
You're a hundred percent correct, sir.
Phrase, man.
Alright, so that is an action item. I would, I would need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve seventy one three. Waiver.
Yep, you're right.
I'm gonna be, to approve the waiver. Um, pertains to section seventeen oh four. So, so uh yeah, it's set of section four, title fourteen. Delaware code required that each school receive not less than ninety percent of the Division One unit to grant it. As a result of the actual unit count.
Second. Alright, we have a motion a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. And that motion carries. The next one is a waiver um pursuant to seventeen oh five A and Mr. Cameron.
So this is the the class size waiver and once again, we we come to you each year. In regards to this, uh, we do our very best to keep our our K to three numbers at at the waiver number, but. Um, unfortunately, our transient population, uh, the best laid plans don't all, don't always happen that way. Plus, uh, the immersion program. We load up when students come into kindergarten, try to maximize that, so. Just by us trying to do that, because you lose to attrition in the immersion program over time. So we load up in K and really what Dr. Person said, as as maybe some newer rivals to try to become or something like that. Uh, so that gets us over our number. So we ask for this waiver so we can continue to do that with the immersion to try to make those numbers. Stay higher because as you lose to attrition, those numbers when you get the third, fourth, and the fifth grade tend to be on the smaller side. Uh, on the, on the class size because you can't really move them be- between the two, so. We, I mean, there are times when we've had thirty students. We, I mean, there are times when we've had thirty students. In two kindergarten classes, the English side and the Spanish side, uh, of the immersion program, which, which is a lot. And also if, I, I did, I don't do this, but I could do this if you want to at some point. I'm hoping you don't. Uh, we can look at the parent support that we push into the classrooms as well because those can count as fractions of time. And so if we did that, we would only probably ask for the waiver because of immersion purposes, but. This kind of covers us in case we were over where we get, where we get an influx of, of folks, uh. And you know how that, how that is with the, the transancy of the western quarter of this, of this state.
Was an action item. Now I need a motion to approve.
Mark seven, to approve the waiver pertaining to section seventeen oh five A subsection A. Top fourteen of that were related to the ratio of students to instructors in many class and kindergarten or grades one through three.
Alright, we have a motion in the second. All in favor say aye. Oppose. And this motion carries.
Um, so I wanted to add, and I probably should have said this during superintendent's comments, but, um. We keep deferring our report of regarding the smarter balanced assessment results from last spring. Uh, we were meant to present in, I think, October. And we were given, we were sent an email that said that, that information was still embargoed through December first. So that's why that is not happening again tonight, but will happen in December. I would caution you that some other districts would appear to be sharing data already. Um, I didn't want you to see those other districts sharing data and wondering why we weren't. Um, but we took that email to mean after December first. So just.
Alright, um. Next, we actually need a change. You get Mr. Hale, um, the financials.
Actually, I will brief one tonight. As of month end, we are in thirty three seven, uh. You're seeing it? Yeah, I see. Um, the fiscal year with the total of thirty two point two four and we ended up with a total in convert of thirty eight point four four for the month. Or basically for current month today, or year today. So overall voting just by one key indicator that I have. Um, I think pointed out before, but wanted to point it again is where we are with public salaries. Public salaries are sitting at thirty four point one seven in a thirty three point seven year that we're holding, you know, pretty much right on. Um, that's absent of any of the recodes that we normally do because we normally later in the year do something, uh, P F A. And we actually will take and put, uh, some salaries, uh, specifically around our tuition based programs. We'll take some of those. So we should be just fine, but I kinda want to, um, point out that key indicator that I think has been pointed out before, but just to make sure as we go. Um, that goes up and down based off of, uh, payouts and such too sometimes. So. Um. We have expended just over four point three million with eight hundred and thirty four K incurred. And we are at, uh, five point one million total. Spent out of the discretionary budget with an eight point nine remaining. So we're in a good spot as of right now. Uh, please note that we have adjusted and I remember I highlighted if I was gonna change anything major, I was going to highlight it for you. The things in yellow are highlighted. Those are changing quite substantially because of the twenty five percent that we took off. Uh, at the beginning of the year because of a proposed, uh, impacts of either reassessment. Discussions being pushed or the federal pieces. So we, we held back the twenty five percent. After we got through unit count, we applied the twenty five percent back. It isn't a twenty five percent for everyone because what ends up happening is it's based off of unit count. So we gave them seventy five percent based off of last year's numbers and we true it up to get them to the hundred percent of this year's number. Though it could be plus or minus. I hope that is. So that is, would be their new budget and, um, I didn't wanna wait until final budget time to do that. Uh, like we normally would because this is kind of a new process and we wanted to be able to get the money to schools so that they could do what they need to do. Any questions on that? Tax collection would be our next one. Um. You see, I think last month I presented that this was coming, but we had a really good current month. Um, of six point seven million. Um, up quite a bit over what we normally would have got. And this month, I remember we adjusted our taxes. Matched the tuition based programs as well as the slight adjustment we made on current expenses. Um, we also in the same month got the senior property tax and disabled veterans tax. Preloaded, which was the four point three seven and we'll get the rest later in the year. Uh, with that being said, we also, um, I did, I just. Highlight again, we got another million that came in for November. It's not reflected, but I'm just giving you, let you know that that did come in. Um, already. It's just, it won't be reflected in from next month's report. So we'll have just shy when you add all that together, uh, eight point six plus. Million to nine point six. And if we scroll to the top, you see we only gotta get to ten point six. So at about middle way of the year, we're about where we should be because it will drop back off to months like this. Um, that you see because that is the, the delinquents, the sales of properties and those sorts of stuff that typically do. So any questions on that? Set aside. Uh, you had approved also and or we had mentioned the one point two six seven two six, um, which is the two small projects for building grounds. However, with, um, the taxes that came in from that you just saw. We were able to utilize our M C I now. So because, so we're gonna be doing a lot of recoding and that's one of the reasons we needed this because of cash flow. But I'm pleased to tell you that also I don't think we're gonna have to worry about that next year because with the way we've been kind of trying to manage the. The. Cash flow related things and kinda include and make some efficiencies. We should have have enough in the carryover M C I to actually start and not have to do the recodes going for anymore. But yeah, start the year in July with being able to utilize M C I funds day one. So we'll be able to request the state give us their match on day one. And that's part of what we were working through and that's why I wanna also thank you for what you did with approving this year's budget and this year's tax rate. Because that allows us again to create that cash flow to make it so that we're more efficient. Because we have a lot of stuff that we have to now go back to and recode because we have to play that. I won't say play a game, but it's just that game of charging everything to one bucket and then we're recoding later on and go back around. We won't have to do that anymore. That'd be, I think, the first time that I'm aware of in seniors history that we, we will be able to utilize M C I on day one. So that will put us behind the. Any questions on that? Alright, monthly revenue. Um, you'll see one, um, slight change, um, that I made. Um, which was highlighted, uh, further down. Um, the twenty three point five seven. I wanna highlight that because it matched to those taxes we just discussed. One of the things I failed to recognize is I had put in the budget for last year, um, because we normally keep, we keep some of these, um. Based off, based off of the, the tax rate. But I failed to recognize that we had removed that from this year's taxes. But we needed to leave it in there because June's taxes coming in July. And we assess last year's taxes and we don't receive them until this fiscal year. So I still needed a spot for them. And so realistically, that should have been, yes, that's small, twenty three dollars and fifty seven cents. That's one, one month's basically allocation of that. So that's why that has been highlighted and that was just a, a, again, powerful mistake on there when we started looking. It's like, there's no more way. It's not supposed to be any more money going in that bucket. So because it was last year's money, um, and that's, that's basically that carryover. So with that said, total, if we scroll down to the bottom, you're gonna see five point nine million has come in. Uh, for fifty nine point four million, excuse me, has come in. And we're getting, uh, we're already at eighty nine point five six percent for the year. So we're, we're in a good spot. You'll see, we also have paid a part of our preload for choice and charter, which we're showing as that loss in revenue. Um, that has been, uh, formally put in there. And I think overall, um, let me see here. If we scroll up to the top, um, and go quick. We scroll up. Um. Remember anything that's, that's red on the revenue is actually a good thing. It means we've actually collected more, so we've received more. And so we don't have a lot of areas to be concerned about because state transportation goes up as we use it. Um, and if we keep scrolling down, uh, for any other big numbers that you'd see. Um, you know, nothing really to worry about cafeteria, same way. It's, it's kind of that in and out sort of approach. And one thing we did do that I will highlight, um, is we did start to assess, um. It's been off and on, but this year we did assess indirect cost on cafeteria. Um, so that will, um, be more operations funds for the district. It's just one of those processes we've done at some years with none others, but we did do that. So that's about another. Just shy of a half million dollars that is showing in revenue, but I can't show it on here. And that's the reason is, is if you scroll down to the problem, bottom. It's already factored into this three point event. That's, um, because it's federal, it's, it's funds that we've already shown either through cafeteria. Actually, no, it would be through this three million. My apologies. Um. Be through that, but it's, it's kind of federal state because y'all know how the federal program works. So it's already factored in. So I couldn't actually put it in here or it was gonna look like we brought in more money than we actually did. So I just wanted to highlight that because it's something that was hard to reflect as far as a, um. An indirect cost receipt because of, again, that. It, it's already your money. So we're just moving it from one bucket to another. So. Any questions? Alright.
Thank you. Alright, we missed two of the action item. We need a motion to approve.
Jeff Vincent, I make a motion to approve the financials.
Alright, we have a motion in second. All in favor say aye. And that motion carries. The next item on our agenda is our long, long range agenda. And, um, so. On the nineteenth, you have your teacher night, um, at five thirty. It'll be at our Seaford McDonald's and it is, um, supported by Seaford. So go out and get your burgers and your chicken nuggets. Uh, don't forget fully admission. Um, then we have the community crack there on November twenty second and cookies with Santa down at the high school. Uh, please remember that working seven, a school expo. The, um, twenty sixth through the twenty eighth. So please don't have any, but I know what you're bringing us or want anything spoiled. Uh, no, not today. No, no school for you. Um, then we have a B T O meeting at West at five P M on twelve four. So go check that out. Also on twelve four, we have your multicultural night at five thirty at, at Fred. On the ninth of, um, December, you have the band concert at middle school at five thirty. On, um, December eleventh, I can't believe we're already. At the end of the school year, um, for this twenty twenty five, you have family fun night, um, at five thirty at Blaze. You have Blue Jay Cabaret at six P M at the high school. And you also have a, um, the chorus concert at five thirty at the middle school. So we have a lot of fun things, um, happening in that evening. Then on twelve twelve, you have a, a parent night out at four o'clock. At both West and at Central, um, so check that out. And then we'll meet back here on the fifteenth for the board investigation meeting, regular investor files at six P M. Are we missing anything, friends?
Want, want to highlight the date of the game?
We have, uh, football games this Saturday at seven P M. Here in, uh, Blue Jay Wells, Blue Jay Stadium, but it's, uh, was in Ryan Davidson. Uh, make sure we get your tickets online.
That's through D I double A, go fans. Yeah, say that again for Dr. Vincent.
Uh, online, D I double A, go fans.
It's on our Facebook page, right?
Has votes, D I A, wants ticketing for playoff games.
Yes.
The district did not raise prices for football games, so no playoffs.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's public service.
I go online.
So we can do that often.
I just come in with a spark on that.
What time it starts. Yeah, so thank, thank you all for sharing and reiterating. Get your ticket.
Please come out and support.
Yes.
It's been a long time since we've been here.
It's a good feeling, really a good feeling. Alright, so now I need a motion to leave public session and go into executive session. For, uh, personnel matter, legal updates and student matters.
Mark seven, we have the public session and, and then the executive session.
Second. Alright, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Oppose. That motion carries and it is six fifty eight P M.